Okay, so we'll get our public caucus started. Tonight, we have with us Bob Durkin, President of the Scranton Chamber of Commerce, and also Amy Loyster, am I saying that right? The Vice President, to give us an update on, you know, activities of the Chamber. So the floor is yours.
So first thing I want to point out is...
Is that mic, is the mic on? Sorry.
There we go.
Thank you.
So what I was going to say is, a couple of things are coming together very nicely at the right time. The Chamber in this past year, I should say over the last several years, has made it a point, we've undertaken strategic plans across a number of our affiliates. And because of the nature of our organization, the Chamber is the umbrella organization, and we have eight different not-for-profits underneath the Chamber umbrella, all of which at this point functionally have strategic plans. So this year was the culmination of that, and we established a whole new strategic plan, the summary of which is on the one side of this paper for you. I can assure you, there's a lot more to it than just one page, but the reality is, this really does a nice job, as far as we're concerned, of summarizing some of the key elements to the strategic plan. And even though this is the Chamber plan, and we have other affiliates, this is basically, just like the Chamber, this plan speaks to how all of our affiliates and the Chamber activities are going to come together. So without going, I don't want to go into this in great detail, because the main thing we wanted to talk about was how this plan can dovetail very effectively with the Economic Development Strategic Plan just completed by the city. Again, you're probably aware, the Chamber, through SLIPCO, also contributed some of the match, $12,500 towards the match for that particular plan. And personally, when we saw the material that was rolling out from the city's Economic Development Strategic Plan, I was really pleased. I think it was very complete. As I've talked, said to the mayor and to others in the administration, I think what was great about it was it was an opportunity, not just to look at the work of the city government, but rather to look at the entire city and identify the key issues that are affecting the city, and the key issues that can change the economic development climate in the city over the next several years. So there's a lot in that plan that really is, you know, the city can't do it all. It's got to be a partnership of different organizations. And so this is exactly the right time to have this conversation, and to talk to you about some of the things that we're involved in, and where we see the convergence of the city plan and our strategic plan. I will point out, though, before flipping to the other side for you on this, when you look at this, in addition to the traditional elements of the mission and vision, what you see across the middle of that, as we call them pillars, they're the six main areas in which Chamber and affiliate activities are focused. And then below that are essentially the main goals for each one of those program areas. But probably, in some ways, the most important part are these three sort of yellow reddish things you see across the bottom, cross-cutting issues. And they are catalytic leadership, and that's the idea that somebody has to make sure that they take the lead, whether it's lead in doing programs, or lead in generating the conversations we all need to have against, across the various elements that make up our economy. Likewise, diversity, equity, and inclusion. What we've talked about internally with the Chamber is that these don't stand alone. These are cross-cutting issues, because they need to be in the DNA of everything we do. Whether it's a Chamber activity, like a business card exchange or a special event, everybody's got to be a part of that. We have to make sure we're doing the outreach, to make sure that all groups, all constituencies in Scranton and Lackawanna County realize that there's a welcome place for them in the activities of what we're doing. Likewise, strategic partnerships, and this takes on a lot of different sort of elements to it. Specifically, it goes to this idea that I started to say before. The city plan, our plan, others have plans, there's a lot of different things, but you can't do it all yourself, and you shouldn't do it all yourself. We shouldn't be setting up separate fiefdoms, or separate projects for this group or that group, if all of them can come together in a better way, in a more effective way. And that's what we mean by strategic partnerships. And we mean that also in another very broad way, and that is talking about working regionally. So we're not just the Scranton Chamber of Commerce, we're the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce, our main footprint being Lackawanna County, but not exclusively. We do activities, including lending and programming, educational programming, and a whole host of things we do with and around the other counties of northeastern Pennsylvania, with the other chambers of commerce, and other economic development organizations. And we think that's really important, because the business person doesn't look at the borders of the city of Scranton and say, "That's it. I just want to be in Scranton. I just want to be in Lackawanna County." No, the business person needs to take advantage of all opportunities. And while some of us, you know, have lived here a long time, have recognized the sometimes parochial nature of the thinking that permeates some of the people in the region, it certainly doesn't permeate the business community, and I don't think it does for the people on the daisier either. You recognize we're a much bigger and much more valuable community when we work together. And those partnerships are going to be critical to the success of the city's plan and of our plan. So with that, I want to turn your attention to the back page. And here, Amy Loyster, our Vice President, has taken the liberty of identifying three key areas in the city's plan in orange boxes on the left. And with that, we've also identified on the right, some of the initiatives that we're involved in at the Chamber. So I wanted to walk through that for you, talk about some of the things that we're involved in, how they really match up very nicely with the city's plan. And let's go back to what I just said before, to lay the ground, the ground and the foundation for strategic partnerships between the city and the Chamber of Commerce, because we want to do these things together. So the first thing I'll point out, under industry growth, and under the city's strategic priorities, promoting business creation through small business and entrepreneurial resources, et cetera. Entrepreneurship is an important part of any economic system, and it's been a part of ours for almost 20 years, at least in a formal fashion. So we have a program that we now call Ignite. Historically, we called it our Business Incubator Program. As many of you are aware, and I think some of you have seen firsthand, down on Lackawanna Avenue, we have the building, the Scranton Enterprise Center. And that Enterprise Center was created in the early 2000s as a home for entrepreneurs in the city of Scranton. Right now, that building, as it sits, has portions of the building, the first and third floors are essentially just leased space, but the second floor is the incubator floor, and that's the Ignite floor. And it's important to recognize that in the world of business incubators, that's the way it really has to play out. When you're doing it right, those who are in the incubator initiative, in this case, the Ignite Program, we do everything we can to make sure their costs are held down, including rent and other amenities and services that we provide to them free of charge. The only way we can do that, frankly, is if we have others in the building paying a different part of the rent. And that's the way it is right now. That building is virtually full. We have only a couple of small spaces left, and the incubator spaces right now are 100% full in that building. It's because of that, and because of our desire to expand the, what we refer to as the entrepreneurial ecosystem throughout Lackawanna County, is what we've said is we're busting down the barriers, busting down the doors of what was traditionally that incubator program. So the Ignite Program no longer represents just what happens at Scranton Enterprise Center, and by the way, our second incubator up in Jessup, called Tech Ridge, but also in partnership with the Carbondale Technology Transfer Center up in Carbondale, which is a light industrial and a commercial food service kitchen. So three very different types of incubator spaces, all of them thriving in Lackawanna County. But what I said before, as we're busting down the doors, the walls, the Ignite Program, as we continue to move forward, is going to be for everybody in Lackawanna County. And I don't care if you're in Scranton, or Dunmore, or Carbondale, or Old Forge, you don't have to be in these buildings to be a part of that program. And what's really important about that is that there's a really strong entrepreneurial spirit right here in Scranton, and especially right here in the downtown. We see a lot of very bright people who are coming into this space. And what we want to be able to do through the Ignite Program is to be able to provide them with services. Think about it as a concierge service for an entrepreneur. It doesn't, you don't have to be enrolled in our program, but if you need information, and you're setting up your business in your garage, your basement, at your kitchen table, we want to be able to provide you with those resources. So we think this dovetails beautifully into what was identified in the city's strategy. In addition, access to capital is critical for all businesses, particularly small business. And so through Metro Action, which is our small business lending arm, which operates actually in a nine-county area of northeastern Pennsylvania, we continue to provide access to small business loans and grants. Through the main early part of the pandemic, we were actually the most active player in the grants program, with literally hundreds of grants. I believe the total was like 800 grants spread out over nine counties of northeastern Pennsylvania. We were the conduit for a number of the grant programs that came through the state and through the county. But that is somewhat, you know, right now, that space is not being, we're not occupying that space. We're seeing that effectively occupied by the city. I think the city is doing a very good job, the administration is doing a very good job, looking across the board at different types of businesses, different sectors, the different needs of small business particularly, with the variety of these grant programs that are being rolled out through ARPA funding, which is, again, this is a perfect match. So on our end, we're sort of steadying back into the field of small business lending. One of the ones that I would point out to you that we did in partnership with funding from the county and the state, and from one of our own divisions, the Lackawanna Industrial Fund Enterprises, was we put together a pool of about $900,000 for a COVID recovery loan program. Now, most of those dollars have been put out, out on the streets already. But what we did was, we realized, when we were doing all these grants, we saw in a lot of the small businesses that we were dealing with, some systemic problems. You know, think about it, the mom-and-pop operation might be really good at a flower shop, or a pizza place, or some other boutique retail, but they can't be all things to everybody. They don't necessarily, a lot of them didn't have strength in their financial management. They didn't have a lot of strength in marketing or technology. A lot of them, you know, were not able, they weren't even on the internet, and they had to figure out how to get on there, and how to make sales, and exposed a lot of the problems. It wasn't unique to our businesses, but it's unique to the small business community. And so what we saw, and when we saw that, we saw a lot of the ones that were growing and emerging, coming out of this pretty strong. They knew a lot more than they did heading in. So if there's a silver lining, there's that. And so what we did with this loan fund was, we said, "We're going to target it to those businesses." And we looked at a number of them and said, "Okay, forget about what happened in the past, let's think about what you're going to do moving forward." So these loans, they were small loans for $5,000 to $25,000, three-year term, 1% interest, because we wanted them to use that money as if it were, you know, they were just using the cash and not worrying about having to pay for the interest. And we put out, I believe the number was 37, so 37 loans so far. We're looking to recapitalize that with some additional money, but it's going to be a revolving loan fund, so it's going to continue post-COVID, as it were. But that's the kind of thing we can do. Yes, Mark?
So were these businesses that might have been un...
So these, were these businesses that might have been, not have enough capital, or under capital, before COVID hit, and then really felt the impact of it? To stay afloat, they relied on these loans?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying? Qualified? Yeah, and again, virtually no fee attached to it, you know, with 1%. I mean, right now, I think interest rates are at about 7% and rising. So we think that's important, and we would like to try to continue to do that. We also have another, a whole other range of different lending instruments that we have, funding from the SBA, funding from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. In fact, one of our most recent loan pools that we have access to is another half a million dollars, and it's called for participation loans. So essentially, the whole idea is, we want to make sure that these businesses have a strong relationship to a local bank. And so in these situations, we can match up to 50% of what the bank may be lending with some of these other dollars. And again, this is recognizing that many small businesses, they may have a bank that they use, but they don't have a banking relationship. And that's really important, you know, for them to be able to grow, and when they do need access to capital, to have that relationship, so they're not out searching. What's more, we really like to see them using the local banks, our community banks that support this Chamber of Commerce and this community, rather than going online and, you know, borrowing from some sort of faceless enterprise. So we're excited that Metro Action is providing that access. In addition, just basic networking, and I should say this, we provide technical assistance, so our staff oftentimes helps hundreds of businesses with their financial access to capital, where they never even come through us for a loan. But we can provide them, we can point them in the right direction to other organizations, like the Northeastern Pennsylvania Alliance, that has dollars, like banking instruments that are like, yes, small business administration loans that almost all of our local banks can provide, so we can be a clearinghouse for these businesses. And then last thing I'd say, under this particular industry growth, is business-to-business engagement, and that's sort of the bread and butter of the Chamber of Commerce, right? It's, you know, as I said before, it's the events, it's the educational programs, it's the small business meetups, it's the card exchanges, because we want to make sure that if we have small businesses in Scranton and Lackawanna County, that they're relying on each other. Wherever you can, use your neighbor. You know, spend your dollars with your neighbor, because then your neighbor can spend those dollars with you. So this is sort of the, the sort of summary of the things that we're involved in, there's more to it, but I just wanted to hitch a few of these. I'm going to ask Amy to take over at this point, to talk a little bit about the next section, which is diversity.
So this past summer, we did a survey of our membership, and, a workforce survey. And out of that, 90% of our business community came back saying that they were having workforce issues, whether it was recruitment, retention, upskilling of employees. No secret, right? I'm sure you're hearing that, you know, across the board every time you're, you know, you're out and about. So that too is on our mind. How do we address the workforce shortage is embedded in our programming, our program of work for this year, it has been in years past, prior to COVID, and then how we advance that moving forward. So I think there's a couple components to that. We know that we are not graduating enough kids out of our high schools, the K-12, and that's really important. So we know we're going to have a talent shortage for the positions that we have available now, and what's going to be coming down the line five, 10 years from now. So we have to start thinking about that. We know that the schools are having challenges. Our guidance counselors are dealing with other issues that normally they would be addressing, career readiness. That isn't happening to the extent that they are able to do so that they had in years past. We know that there's a shortage of employees out there for the existing workforce, and that we need to start recruiting from outside in. So how do we bridge both of those connections? So we're doing that in a couple ways. Talent pipeline, COVID taught us that we have a lot of people that are remote working, they're moving from out of market into northeastern Pennsylvania to live, work, play, and then do the remote work. They can travel into the city, maybe a day a week, maybe two days a week. So we want to capture those individuals, and we want to capture those families that are having concerns from COVID, safety, maybe they want to move out of the metro markets, move to a suburb, maybe move to a smaller city that looks similar to where they are. We're doing that through a programmatic marketing campaign. We're in our third year this year. We did it prior to COVID, we did it during COVID, and we're now advancing into our next year with a partnership with the Lackawanna County Visitors Bureau. So what does that entail? That is an online marketing campaign where we're targeting different groups, millennials, remote workers, families of four that are looking to relocate out, retirees, in an effort to bring them here to the area, have them invest in a house, invest, you know, into a career here, and just grow in northeastern Pennsylvania. That helps us grow the talent pipeline. And that, we had some pretty impressive statistics from a campaign last year. We had 1.77 million impressions, and of those, we had videos, static advertising that went onto your social media, your Facebook, your Youtubes, your whatever, we were targeting and retargeting you. We had a 76% completion rate from some of the videos, that's off the charts. And the areas that we were seeing most of our attention from was New Jersey, Long Island, New York, Manhattan, Philadelphia, and Washington DC. So as we move to the next phase, it'll be interesting to see what people are looking at now that we're a year, almost a year and a half, post-COVID. Let's see here, engagement of our K-12s, our teachers are so important to us, we want to build that talent pipeline. We're doing that in a couple ways, through career pathways. Educator in the Workplace will be coming back this year. We did it pre-COVID, whereas teachers were coming out of the classroom, they were spending five days with us, learning about workforce development in northeastern Pennsylvania. They were then shadowing a business for three days, and then we were helping them with curriculum writing. COVID hit, but we didn't stop the program, we went to a virtual, and now that we're back, and the schools are back, we are bringing, bringing that back next year. We're piloting a new program of career readiness videos, and what's really going to be important for this is that it is going to shadow an employee in a position from a business that's currently working here. So as a student, whether you're a college student, you're a K-12 student, you can go onto a video library that we'll have. So you download a two-minute video, you watch what it's like to be an engineer at Lockheed Martin. And from there, you click the button, and you get a downloadable PDF that says, "This is what an engineer does, these are the skillsets you need, these are the schools you need to, that are available, and these are the employers in our market that are employing, employing these individuals." Talent readiness, career readiness, hopefully the schools will use it, and the college kids, and job seekers.
Let me just make, underscore something I think is really important about that. One of the things that we hear constantly from employers, but also from educators, is that there's a weakness in the whole process of families and individuals learning about existing jobs. I mean, I can't tell you how many times, and I'll bet you each one of you have heard this before, "Oh, my, my daughter is graduating from Penn State with a degree in engineering, and she's going to have to go find a job someplace else, because there are no jobs in engineering here." That is not true. There's not a single sector of job that isn't available in northeastern Pennsylvania. And in some of the sectors, healthcare really jumps out, there's a huge number of jobs. It's just that there's not, there's a disconnect between what's happening with the individuals, the students, and the families, be they, you know, secondary or higher education, recognizing or connecting to that. And that's not necessarily their fault. I think that's, that's on us. So many of the things that Amy's working on through Skills in Scranton and through other partnerships are going to work towards that, including these videos, because we have to try to connect with these students the way they want to be connected. It's not, not the way I did it. It's not the way my father and I, you know, figured out where I was going to go to school, or what I was going to do next. It's very, very different, and we have to do it on those terms. And we've been lucky, because we put together some really nice strategic partnerships. Amy mentioned the Visitors Bureau, but there's also Discover NEPA, which is a fantastic program that's, you know, run regionally, and they do great videos, and that's kind of the way you have to speak to these people these days. So we're doing everything we can to try to make those connections, and, and again, this ties in very, very much, very closely to what's on the strategic plan for the city as well.
So we're thinking about the kids, we're thinking about our college kids, and we're also thinking about the business community. How do we help our existing businesses attract talent? So we're doing that in a couple ways. We launched a program called Workforce Wednesday. It's live every week, every Wednesday, for a Chamber member to come on and talk about their business, what positions they have open, how do you get a job at ABC Company, how do you apply for those positions, and what does the corporate culture look like? Because really, in this job market, how do you differentiate yourself? And I think it's going to come down to corporate culture. Also, we have a job board, it's, anyone can go on ScrantonChamber.com, our members can post for free the available positions they have, and it's open for anyone who wants to search a job and see, see what's open in our community. Small Business Internship Fund, we launched that in 2019, probably one of the most important programs we'll have for workforce development moving forward. And why is that? We have seven colleges and universities in Lackawanna County, we have college students. What better way to have them start a career than to get involved in a business that can give them real-world experience? So we're trying to promote those, trying to connect the students with the businesses, and helping businesses who haven't traditionally taken internship. How do we help them develop one? What does it look like? And we can help offset some of the costs associated with that. And then we have our Leadership Lackawanna Program, which is developing leadership. That's going to be really important for us as we grow our community. Are we developing the leaders for tomorrow? And we do that with the high school kids, where we're taking them a year-long program. They do a community service project, they learn A to Z about the community. And we're also doing that at a college level, through an online virtual module, where it's six weeks, same thing. A college student enrolled in a trade school or one of the universities, and then they go through the modules over six weeks, resume writing, interviewing skills, learning about the community. So it's really all about, you know, building, building the community and building leadership. That's a nutshell for workforce development. Any questions before we move on?
I just want to touch on the career pathway. So this year, 2023, in the vocational world, if you don't take the Keystone, which was the end-of-program exam, our students can satisfy the graduation requirements, because you were saying, there's, there is a problem with kids graduating. So they can substitute a pathway using this template where we provide certifications. And that can, that could be a component that satisfies the graduation requirements, so they graduate. And that helps everybody, that helps the school profiles, or the sending schools. And then, and to touch on what you're saying, one of the biggest things that I realize, and we have occupation advisory committees for each of our programs, with people of industry to come, and we have to meet twice a year, it's mandated, but it's a great way to hear what the industry wants from us. I mean, we have, we have a program of study, from the PDE, that we have to follow, but the biggest, the biggest things they ask for is, you know, the soft skills. And, and so we try to incorporate that in all of our programs, like, you know, interview, the interview process, digital portfolios, it's the world we live in now, where the interview may be online, and, and these companies that are hiring, they want to see work, they want artifacts, they want to see that these kids have learned stuff and can prove it. So a digital portfolio is a great way to do that. Sometimes they view that even before the interview process, which is, which is fantastic, so...
I think the program you're talking about is Act 148 with the state, where the...
It's Act 1, I think it's 158. I don't know, I'm not sure about, but yeah, it's this year.
It's going to be more important than ever.
This year, definitely this year, yeah.
And, and I'm not pandering when I say this, but what we've seen from CTC over the last five, six, seven years has been fantastic. Not only are your enrollments up, and I know you know that, but overall, you know, there are so many jobs in the trades, and so many real strong, you know, family-sustaining job opportunities. We need to get over this culture in their community that says, you know, "You've got to go to a four-year school." Now, again, we're proud of, and we want to take advantage of the quality of our higher educational institutions, but that's not a job necessarily, or a pathway for everybody. And the stronger we are across the board, the better it is for this community. So we're really pleased with that relationship as well. So I just want to, because I don't want, in the interest of time, talk about, in this case, infrastructure. So a few items that I want to mention. So obviously, transportation infrastructure, you know, there are great opportunities with the Federal Infrastructure and Jobs Act, and we actually held a couple of different forums with the Deputy Secretary from the Governor's Office, a gentleman by name Jack Rourke, he's the expert in the Commonwealth on the federal infrastructure funding, funneling into the Commonwealth. And in fact, we did a, we did a program probably about two months ago, where we had him come in, and we specifically invited municipalities from across Lackawanna County. Because, okay, we've all seen this with ARPA money, right? It's great that those dollars are identified for each municipality and school district, but it's pretty complicated, and especially some of our smaller municipalities and governmental institutions are having a hard time figuring it out. They're afraid to spend the money. The same thing applies on the infrastructure rules. It's not as simple or straightforward as it might seem, but the Commonwealth has done a pretty good job of funneling that into one particular department. And so the, the space that we're occupying is probably as much about advocacy as anything else. So we're out there pushing to make sure that we get as many dollars as possible for the city of Scranton, and for Lackawanna County, out of those federal monies that are, that are housed now at the state. Broadband is critically important. The way I see it, and the way it's really well represented in your strategic plan, is this whole vision of saying, "Okay, Amy talked about the talent attraction option," right? And we've succeeded, we know it. You know this, we're filling these downtown loft apartments, and we're adding more and more, and they're just getting filled up. And a whole host of these folks are coming back to the area, or they're moving to the area de novo. And we have to make sure that if they're going to be working remotely, they have to have access to broadband, they have to have 5G access. And why do we want to do that? It isn't just that we want them spending their money here in Scranton, or buying a home here in Scranton, or in northeastern Pennsylvania. If we get this bright talent back here, that's a pool of talent that we can then tap for entrepreneurial opportunities, or for the other businesses that are here, to help them sustain their businesses. At some point in time, you know, someone's going to recognize, "Yes, I can work remotely from Scranton and with my international corporation in New York City, but what about this other business here in northeastern Pennsylvania, and in the city of Scranton?" We want to make sure that that pool is as deep and as broad as possible. And so these elements are critically important. And I have this sort of vision, and I'm not alone with this, of especially the city of Scranton being so well-wired that it is going to be a major selling point. When you buy a home in Scranton, when you start a business in Scranton, you're going to say, "We've got the..." to say, we've got the best service. I don't have to worry about any breakdown in that communication. And I think we can get there, because there are resources, and your plan, this plan speaks to that, and we're there to help on whatever way we can, including a partnership with Lackawanna County that's currently applying for funding to add five new towers, internet towers across Lackawanna County. And I think that those things need to be dovetailed, we have to have those work together. Public transportation, Mark, we were talking about this before. Not only do we have these individuals, these young people of a generation that didn't, doesn't drive or doesn't want to drive, but the students are the same way. They don't want to drive. And so we have to make sure that our public transportation is public transportation for 2022, 2025, 2030, and beyond. And Tim McGrath, who runs, now runs COLTS, and he's on our board, he's actually treasurer of our board, he and I just had a meeting this afternoon to talk about some things. And he is, you know, poised to be working with the city, to be working with the county, to be working with the chamber and others, to put together a plan for transportation. It isn't just about fixed route transit. It isn't just about where the COLTS buses have been running since 1965 or 1972, when COLTS, I think, came into being. But it's the paratransit, it's the vans, it's access to, you know, various, you know, different means of transportation that are adjusting to the needs of this community. And since almost everything comes back to workforce, at least that's the way we see it, there are great opportunities both for jobs within the city of Scranton and outside the city of Scranton for the residents of the city of Scranton. And we have to make sure that those folks who might have limited access, perhaps because they're from different constituencies, immigrant groups, or refugee groups, that may not have access to their own private transportation, we have to make sure we can get them to those jobs. It's a service we need to represent, to do, to represent our chamber members. Our businesses need the widest pool possible, and public transportation is going to be a critical part of that whole conversation. And next on, they've listed here is Brownfields. In fact, before I get to that, let me go to the Amtrak. So we've been on board since early on on the possibility of transportation from Scranton to New York City. And of course, you know, President Biden, Congressman Cartwright, Senator Casey have put all the chips in the middle of the table on this one. We're working both with the Lackawanna County Visitors Bureau, Pocono Mountain Visitors Bureau, with community organizations, economic development organizations, up and down the corridor from here to the New Jersey line. And I know the mayor's done a very good job of likewise coordinating other municipalities and other mayors to sign on. We've made it clear in working with these groups in Lackawanna County and Monroe County that the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce, SLIPCO, and our other components, we're here to do whatever we have to do to get this. And if it means resources for marketing, if it's resources for other purposes, we're standing at the ready to do what we need to do, because we know if we can get it, it's going to be a challenge for everybody. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is going to have to subsidize this, that's the nature of the beast. But it may be more difficult to overcome some of those political barriers in Harrisburg and Washington, and we're here to do whatever we need to do, because we think it's a critically valuable opportunity for us to put Scranton even more prominently on the map. It isn't just about how many people are going to ride to and from New York, it's having an Amtrak run into the city. And we think that that's going to be critical. So we're putting a lot of time and resources into that. So let me back up and talk about Brownfields from an infrastructure standpoint. Mount Pleasant Corporate Center at the gateway into downtown Scranton was a project that the chamber took on 13 years ago, basically for the sole purpose of cleaning up the gateway into the downtown. And secondarily, most, but probably of equal importance, I guess, was to make sure we had some good quality jobs right here on the perimeter of the downtown. And that's happened. Geisinger, of course, investing in two separate buildings and a third property that we have out there. The sheets that's out there was also quality, you know, kind of a, put your city on the map kind of thing. But we're not done. That may be done, we're finished with that, but we're not done. The SLIPCO strategic plan that parallels what we're doing here, very specifically, our leadership of SLIPCO has said they want us looking in Scranton. They want us to take on our next, another big project in Scranton, and we're ready to do that. I can't tell you right now exactly what that is, and even if I did know, I couldn't tell you in public, but I will tell you, we're looking at a number of different spaces, and we think this strategic plan is going to help lay a foundation for some of this. We think there's a lot of interesting things that could be done, things that are, I'm going to say are outside the box of what we would traditionally have done as the chamber and SLIPCO. You know, historically, we've done 15 business and industrial parks, a number of which are either in whole or part in the city of Scranton. But what's happening in this market right now doesn't really call for that. What it calls for is to look at this city with its infrastructure, its building infrastructure, its roadway infrastructure, its broadband infrastructure, and say, well, what can we do to bring high-quality, family-sustaining jobs into the city of Scranton and into Lackawanna County and northeastern Pennsylvania as a whole? That's where we are right now. We're in a great spot because of the, notwithstanding some of the challenges we have in our economy with supply chain and workforce issues, but what we do have is a lot of businesses and a lot of investors that care about Scranton and Lackawanna County. And we're going to take advantage of that. And it may not be, you know, 5,000 jobs at, you know, whatever, a chip factory, but if it's 50 jobs or 25 jobs in a high-quality research center, if it's something unique that takes advantage of the educational resources that we have, we're going to do that. And we're excited about it, we're looking forward to working with the administration and with council over the next couple of years to identify what we think is, are the best ways to make Scranton a better place for everybody. So it's kind of our spiel for the day.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I just have one quick one. So earlier you mentioned Scranton Enterprise Center, and you said there's a floor that's, it's an incubator floor. Could you give us an example of some of the businesses that are incubating there right now?
Do you have a list of the...
Or just a couple examples?
Yeah, I won't be able to tell you some of the names off the top of my head, because they all have rather unusual names. But they're all, most of them are technology-based. We have everything from somebody who's working with, several of them are working with utilities, they have tech, they've developed new technologies. We have some businesses that are working in the healthcare field. We have businesses there that have worked in the educational field, supporting higher education. These are all entrepreneurs, these are bright, bright people who have come up with the next mousetrap in their particular space. And a number of them, we just graduated five of them last year, all of which are growing in different ways. But that space down there is filled. I'm going to put it out there right now. If we can find a time, I'd love to have you come down, walk around that floor, meet these folks. We did this a couple of years with, years ago with Governor Wolf, and we walked it, walked door to door. We gave all the entrepreneurs like two minutes, and the governors went, walked, and they said, here's what we do, here's what our market is, here's the technologies we're using. Boom, next one, next one. You know, Netdriven stands out as an example of a success, that, you know, Pat Sandone, I'm going to say about eight years ago, nine years ago, started his business part-time by himself. He grew it ultimately to be 70 to 80 employees in that building, and then he did, exercised his exit strategy, sold to a national, actually international company, which has actually been purchased by yet another one. Now, that company's gone mostly remote, but those people are still here. They're still in Scranton, they're still in Lackawanna County with those jobs. That's what we're searching for. We want those to be, the next one to be the next 10, 15, 20, 30 jobs coming out of that space.
And Pat's back.
Yeah.
He's back in our building in another spot, starting a new business. So serial entrepreneurism.
Yes, thank you. Just as, you know, remote work becomes more prevalent, I guess, is there anything in the works in terms of coworking space?
Yes, we had been working with a particular purveyor on the possibility that that was a space that was going to be occupying the Scranton Enterprise Center. I'd be out of line if I go too far down this road. Suffice to say, a better space has been found, and while it's not in our building, we have made it very clear to the individual involved, and the administration was actually involved in some of the early connections. We've said to them, as soon as you're ready, let us know, we're going to promote the heck out of it. Because, you know, there's certain things you have to have to be a first-class city right now, and coworking space is one of them.
Yes.
And quality coworking space. You know, some people think they can just throw some space together and rent out something by the day or the week. No, the company that's been identified, we've done our due diligence on it, we recognize it's a good company, very experienced, and so we're excited that that's going to happen pretty soon.
Does anyone else have anything? Thank you so much for coming in. Really appreciate it.